Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Delverlos.
Here.
Merrenga.
Here.
Northhook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwall.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, I don't see our pastor here tonight from Casa de mi Padre. So, Councilmember Merrenga has offered to give the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and we're going to follow that by the pledge.
Shall we pray? Dear God, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. Thank you for our community and those who live here and work here and serve here. We pray especially as we think about Veterans Day last week for our men and women in the armed services. We thank you for them. Thank you for their service, and we pray that you will protect them in the work that they do protecting our freedoms. And we thank you for our police and fire and our emergency responders, and we pray that you give them protection and thank you for their service as well. We thank you for the opportunity to gather and the freedoms that we have in our country and our state. And we pray that you view this tonight as we make decisions for our community and forgive us for our sins, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that very much. You have before you tonight's agendas or motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. In the opposition, please say no. We also have two sets of minutes. The first is from the October 24 regular meeting, three weeks ago, and I was gone at that time. So, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support. Any additions, corrections, anything? Anybody want to point out on those? If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes from the regular meeting, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Also, we have a copy of the minutes from our special city council meeting on November 10 last week, Thursday. The corrected version is on the desk with a little red ink on it, showing that there was just one commercial tax appeal that was discussed at that meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes from the special city council meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Any support? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Thank you. Ken, kind of a happy amount of bills tonight in the seven figures. That doesn't happen very often. So what would you like to point out for us on that?
Well, I think I should start with the three biggest bills, because that's 55% of what you're looking at tonight. That includes the monthly health insurance premium bill for all city employees. It includes a final payment for the downtown project funded by the DVA for the pavilion parking lot improvements, the farmer's market down there. And it includes a progress payment that includes two months of work by Georgetown Construction on water main projects on Marine Street and 29th Street in Granville. That was almost $300,000 by itself. So those were the large ones. There were a few smaller ones that I think are worth pointing out. The bill for camps was the grinding that we do of all the brush and waste that we accept from residents and take out of city properties. That was recently done at the DPW. That was an $8575 bill. The repaving, or paving, I guess I should say. It was previously a gravel trail in Heritage Park, was completed recently by Great Lakes Paving, $14,880. And then there's a progress payment as well for the HVAC control improvement project at the police court building, $27,000 on that invoice, and that represents about 40% of the project being billed to date. So all that adds up to bigger numbers, Mr. Mayor.
If there's questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Questions for Ken about any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight on the amount of $14,160.66 sets?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support. Other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrenga.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Well, tonight, the first presentation we have is from Lisa Vanderwan regarding the Granville summer school program, or summer rec program. So tell us about all the fun everybody had.
Yes, it was a wonderful year. It felt good to get back to Granville, if we can say, post-COVID. So I have a couple of videos to show. But first, I wanted to thank you for your service and also thank you from Granville Public Schools and Community Education for your support of the program. We just saw some great positive interactions, and it was just a great summer. And without you, that wouldn't be possible. So thanks for the continued support. Let me just pull up a couple of videos here, and it'll give you an idea of all the fun we had. Sorry, just a moment.
And while you're doing that, thank you for all the work that you do, making sure that summer is a lot more fun than it would be otherwise.
It is fun in Granville. We do have a good time. I want to just mention, too, the field reservations were up over 10% over pre-COVID, and our camps and classes were up 30% from pre-COVID. So everybody's getting back out there and doing things. This first one is just of our summer rec program that you help support. And then I'll show another one that is just of our camps and classes. The volume's down on, is it?
... This year, it first got postponed until later in the summer, and then summer came and went, and it never happened. So these candidates never got the opportunity. So I've kind of looked for a quiet agenda tonight, invite them out tonight. And I've got two of our four most recent graduates here tonight. I'll ask to join me up here, Tom Brugema and Roberto Cardona Gonzalez. Two of the classmates that couldn't make it tonight, Dave Burkett and Jordan Zandi. Along with these two fellows, started last October. And this is for a part-time job with no guaranteed hours, mind you. They go to school two nights a week for up to four hours and usually a full Saturday every month for six months. And that accumulates with a bunch of final practical and didactic written testing in April. And then they become full-fledged firefighters, and they're out and on probation. And this has been long enough now because of the weirdness with that lack of a graduation ceremony that these guys are just about ready to come off probation. But I just wanted to take a second to thank them, thank their families for their support. Couldn't happen without the family supporting them as they go through this journey. And it's a big ask for a part-time job that has no guaranteed hours. When the hours do come, they can come at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, not at all. So we're happy to have these guys on board, and I've got their badges here for them. If anybody wants to take pictures, they're already out, never mind. Congratulations. All right, that's all, Mayor. Thanks for having us today.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you both. Appreciate your service, and thank you.
I think I'm up next, too, so I'll just stand ready.
Okay. Is there, yeah, before that, Chief, is there any other public comment for tonight? Anybody like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, tell us what you're thinking about. Nick, Kyla?
Hello, boss. And I just wanted to remind everybody that we're holding a pruning class here on Thursday night at 5:30 for people that want to learn how to prune their trees correctly so that they aren't causing damage or possibly infecting them with diseases or pruning an oak tree before the bugs are actually away for the winter. So it's a great way to start your certificate to become a community forester. And so if anybody's interested, they can get ahold of me or message us on Facebook.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Kyla. Any other public comment? Okay. Chief? Thank you, you're back. Randy just mentioned, would your firefighters like picture a couple more pictures upfront facing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so we should ask the family. Families of the firefighters, if you want, or take some more pictures. Okay, Chief, update support emergency operations plan.
Right, as indicated in the memo, as part of our relationship with Kent County Emergency Management, the city is required, because we have a population of 10,000 or greater, a support emergency operations plan. It's really not as much, as you could probably see, a plan as it is, just a list of resources, and it tells who's in charge of what in the event that something like that shakes out in the city. So this is just a scheduled update to that. But since the template was changed by the state, it does require a resolution and authorization for the mayor to sign. So I might be happy to take any questions, but other than what's in your packet, I don't have much to add right now.
Questions for the chief? If not, Marcy, what's the resolution number on this one?
3288.
3288. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 3288, a resolution to approve the adoption to support emergency operations plan for the city of Granville?
So moved.
Support. Motion to support. Any questions, comments? No. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Merrenga.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Chief. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's quite a few items here. The October, or the September clean water plant report and the October report from the treasurer's office and the police department. Thank you again for a great, informative police report. Also, the Parks and Rec Recreation Board minutes from August and September and the October minutes from the Environmental Sustainability Committee, the Historical Commission, and the Library Board. And also, we have a couple other resolutions. One is to set a public hearing to vacate an alley that runs parallel just north of Prairie, between Taplin and...
Between Prairie and Taplin and between Higgins and Vermont.
Vermont. So that will be just to set a public hearing for that for November 28 at 7:15. Also, there's been a request to reschedule our December 26 meeting to the week before, because I'm not sure we want to come in the day after Christmas. And also, we have a couple miscellaneous purchase orders and requests, and there's some backup materials in our packets. One is the motor pool, the crash protection unit. They're taking the retired fire truck and changing it into a vehicle that can be used to keep everybody safe when there's an incident.
Yeah, that's correct. Initially, I think Charlie initially planned to use a retired snowplow for that, but we found out there's not much of a market for retired fire apparatus financially. And when they compared the two, the retired fire truck is in much better mechanical and body condition than the retired snowplow. So we have changed course on that, elected to use that for that purpose instead of the retired snowplow.
And then the final item of purchase would be painting at the police, at the police department. So approval of the consent agenda because of those purchases would be in the best interest of the city. So I do have one question for JR. On the Environmental Sustainability Committee, the next event is going to be December 30. Is that one where we can get rid of all of our Christmas boxes?
It is, cardboard.
I have this cardboard.
All the foam that you're going to get with all your fun packages you get for Christmas. Bring those down.
Good, same thing, wonderful.
Same thing.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support. Any items anybody would like to talk about in particular?
I have a question for Josh. Did the Parks and Rec Board meet in October or not?
Yes. Yeah, we haven't looked at, I have to write the minutes yet for October. We'll look at those. We did discuss the worship pits and the town courts. A couple of the neighbors did come and talk to us about that.
Okay. And you feel good about it? You have a resolution?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of what we talked about last time. Looking to co-locate at Wedgewood and then do something with the courts over at South.
Thanks.
Yeah, South.
Appreciate it. And Chief, the two paint bids were vastly different. Are we going to get a good quality job on the lawn?
Charlie actually handled the evaluation of it. He is very comfortable in the water park.
Okay, thanks.
We've got a motion and support. Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Merrenga.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, city manager's report.
Just one purchase there. It separated from the consent agenda because it was not budgeted. We did have the unexpected purchase of the fuel tanks replacement at the DPW. And as part of that, now, the tanks council did approve the purchase, and they've been ordered, I'm not sure if they've arrived yet or not, but they do need to request, or they do need to be wired by an licensed electrician for the shut-off switches. And so that also was not a budgeted purchase. And Charlie submitted a memorandum into your packet that indicated that he had gotten quotes from a couple of local electricians, the lowest quote of which was provided by Mekoff Electric in the amount of $3,185. And he's asking for council approval of that work in the best interest of the city so that the tanks can be installed with the proper shut-off and put into service.
Questions for Ken on that item? If not, is there a motion to authorize the hiring of Mekoff Electric to do that electrical work in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support. And support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwall.
Yes.
Delverlos.
Yes.
Merrenga.
Yes.
Northhook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Ken, anything else?
Just one item I had mentioned to council previously in an email of an opportunity coming up in December to visit the Kent County Emergency Dispatch Center, something that I don't think a lot of the council members had an opportunity to do. And I wanted to draw your attention to that email that had several possible different dates and times. I've heard from a couple council members that they wish to participate, and they gave me some direction on the times they're available. Haven't heard from the rest. And so before I finalize that, I want to make sure that if anybody was intending to respond, they had opportunity before I pick the date and move ahead on that. So if you're curious about what those dates are, catch me after the meeting. I'll remind you on those, and you can let me know if you're interested in participating. Pretty interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, very high-tech.
That's it for me. Anything else? Okay. Start with, or let's do council member comments, and Randy, let's go with you.
I just want to say it's great to see new people who are willing to invest in themselves and join the fire service. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, ditto. Thanks for your service, and thanks for putting yourselves out there and taking on all the training and extra time to serve the community. Appreciate it. And thank you to Marcy and the crew in the clerk's office for running a smooth election last week. Sounds like everything went pretty well, but I know you guys were busy, so appreciate that. And that's your fourth one this year, right? So you guys are probably ready for a break in the election department. But good job.
I just echo that. Thank you again to those of you who are here and those who are not here as well. So that was a wonderful presentation. And also to Lisa and all of the, all of those who make the summer rec program possible. I know there were a lot of activities there that my kids had participated in, and they had a lot of fun. And it's also great for parents, too, especially when you're the stay-at-home dad in the summer from teaching. So it gives you a little bit of a break, so it was great. So thank you to all of you. And I was just going to say the exact same thing about the election. Four is quite a feat to do in a single year. So thank you to you, Marcy, and all of those who work so hard on behalf of ensuring that we have transparent and fair elections in our country and in our city. Thank you.
Roberto, Tom, congratulations, and thank you very much for your service to the community. Lisa, thanks for the presentation. And Marcy, you're a rock star. You and your team, thank you so much for carrying it off again this week.
Well, I have more of the same. I commend both you gentlemen for what you're doing and for the career you are embarking upon. And it's really important, as you know, and it's just, it's really much appreciated in this day and age, let me tell you. Thanks again to Lisa and to Marcy. Yeah, you are the superstar, no question about it. Marcy and her staff, all her staff and all the election workers, they pulled off another, another great election. Thanks. Sounds like a broken record, but both gentlemen, thank you for your, for your commitment. And kids, don't you think your dad's pretty cool? Did you guys get a, make sure you get a nice picture of that badge, too, okay? That's, that's a special one. And Lisa, thank you obviously for all your work, too. And when the middle school shuts down, make sure we find a pool for all the old people to go swim at lunchtime on. That's a special request, okay? And I guess since I'm the last one, I just wish everybody in this room a happy Thanksgiving next week. I can't believe that's already next week already, but enjoy time with your friends, family and whoever that else may be. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, kind of a belated, thank you to every veteran that lives in Granville. I know it was last week, but we haven't had a meeting for a while, so thank you for those who've served. I know a lot of veterans are very quiet about their service. I was going through some papers of my mother last week and she had kept all my dad's Army papers, which I had never seen before, and he actually got two Bronze Stars, something he never told me. I knew he had one, but not two, so that was kind of interesting. The things you learn. Also, Marcy, yeah, perfect election. It's good when you're not on the front page of the news or on Good Morning America or something like that, so good. Just kind of a save the date, the Granville Community Choir is back at it singing. We had a concert scheduled for last year, but because of, what was it, the Omicron at that time, whatever variant was going around, we canceled. So that is going to be December 15 at Granville First Reform Church. That's on a Thursday, so the 15th. Also, I met with somebody last week about the tennis club at Ramblewood. And maybe some of you already have and if not, you're probably going to be getting a call. They're in a fundraising operation right now and I think they've raised like $700,000, so it's a serious group. So who knows? Anyway, I know that it generated a lot of interest, but it, they're working on it, so I thought that was pretty cool. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Great. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Have a good rest of your evening.